Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Proton Reynolds.
Here.
Mayor Stonehouse. Here. I do have a list of vacancies on city boards and committees, and I'd like to read that. Board of Zoning Appeals, we have two openings. Board of Review, two. Brownfield Redevelopment, two openings. Harbor Advisory Committee, one. Housing Commission, one. Investment Advisory Board, two. Local Development Finance Authority, two. Local Officers Compensation Commission, two. The Marquette County Transit Authority, one opening. Prescott Advisory Committee, three openings, and the Planning Commission, one opening. And we ask that all citizens really consider joining one of those committees and helping the city continue to move forward. The amount of work the committees do, the valuable insight they provide to the city commission and to the leadership and staff of the community and the city is really invaluable. And again, I ask everybody to really consider that. The applications are available on the city website, and we are very anxious to have you join a committee and give us all a hand. That brings us down to the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, I will need a motion for approving the agenda. Commissioner Schlegel.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda as written.
Commissioner Frazier, second. Commissioner Schlegel, any further comments?
None.
Commissioner Frazier?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And any opposed by no. Hearing none, the approval of the agenda is seven to zero. That brings us then to boards and committees, and particularly recognizing our outgoing members. Misa Katie for the Marquette Area Wastewater Advisory Board, Christine Granger for Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, and Claire Moore for the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Are they in the audience here? If you are, could you please join me at the podium? This is always difficult to be heard up here by our television audience, but we do have certificates of appreciation for you. And Misa, this one for you. Christine.
Thank you.
And Claire.
Thank you.
And more important, we also have City of Marquette official T-shirts. That's right. These actually do give superpowers to, by the way. But you have to only put them on in a telephone booth. If they do not fit, or if you don't like the color, please, the city manager's office would be available to try and exchange it for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you've done. Thank you very much for helping the city continue to move. And again, I encourage all of us to really take these folks, again, a big thank you, because it does take time, it does take effort, but it has, I think, a great outcome. So, thank you very much. We have one new member. We do have one new member, and that is Jill Malin to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Jill, if you can join me at the podium, please. Jill, thank you very much for agreeing to be on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We really need your help, and again, it's a great committee. You do a super service for the city by being on it. And this is your official City of Marquette pin, and just like the T-shirt, superpowers on which our clerk will now swear you in.
I, Jill Malin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Marquette according to the best of my ability.
Welcome. And I'll take two signatures, so you can keep one of the originals.
Thank you.
We now are at our first public comment period. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making comments. Anyone desiring to address the commission, please come forward.
Name is Art Sari. I've been a property owner here since 1983. I believe you are going to be discussing the large dock project.
Dr. Sari, we need your physical address.
1002 Aloe Road.
Thank you.
You are planning a large dock project downtown. My concern is parking. It's unfortunate, I don't see a diagram here of the project as it is planned, but there are parking problems down along Lake Shore Boulevard. So, as I look at it, it's a $5.6 million project. I understand you have grants, but that's $280 per person who lives in Marquette year round, as far as I can see. And there is great concern about how locals are going to access it, other than the individuals that are in the high rises that are going up currently, that are rather high dollars, I understand it. And the individuals at Hampton Inn. It is right in front of Hampton Inn, it's part of the boardwalk, and I don't know how many of you have parked up by the courthouse and walked down to walk on the boardwalk, but that is about your accessibility. So, my concern is, is what are you going to do about parking down there?
We don't respond directly to questions.
Then you can think about it for another 1.25. I've never seen politicians be this quiet for so long. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to address the commission?
Frank Jeffero, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Mr. Swenson told me the DPW was charged with bench placement along the wooded lakeshore at Shyrus Park, which is foolish. They're the best department to install benches, but not to decide on their placement. Here's yet another example of a party so fixated on a cause, they lose sight of the big picture. It took four attempts over a week's time to get hold of the DPW. Neither they, this board, or those who request the sites adequately account for the fragility of beach grass. Two of the three benches encouraged the trampling of beach grass between them and the lake. As our parks become cluttered with amenities, our lakeshore converts from natural to urbanized. Of course, it is eroding anyway, as this board remains incognizant of how important the Shyrus Beach is from scenic and tourism standpoints. Of the five members present last time, only one cared enough to address this beach, which they well know is critical to thousands of their constituents. Mr. Frazier reminded us that we're looking for funding, after I just indicated that we're no surer of procuring a grant than we were one year ago. I called a consultant, did my homework, did Mr. Frazier. Also, last time, two residents advised against renaming Coast Guard Road Museum Drive. The manager said Museum Drive was written on the drawing, that the name isn't being changed. Yet this staff error upset residents enough to waste personal time running down here. Certainly, the engineer knew the name as Coast Guard Road. I agree with the residents about the name, but realize the oversight was not totally accidental. The site plan clearly shows that the museum benefits from the road, the loop, nine parking spots, and drainage infrastructure that's solely on museum property. Only the lighthouse lot and north section of the trail are within the park. Otherwise, the projected, the project benefits the museum. That's why the engineer wrote Museum Drive, even if he didn't mean to. Half the diverted million dollars from College Avenue went toward a museum, which this so-called mayor is a key player in. Financial interest doesn't matter. The bottom line is what happens to a piece of land, not how it got that way. Influence is just as damaging. A woman at the beach mentioned the lost trees, the benefit to the museum, and that they're, quote, "all in cahoots." I don't know her, she didn't seem to recognize me. Amazing how so many unrelated people reach the same conclusions. Then there's the world's nicest man, who's done so much for our city, never said a bad word, served on city boards. Well, he's moving. Nice work. Shame on all of you. Do not serve on city boards, people. When push comes to shove, they'll discard you like pieces of trash. In my opinion, Mr. Stonehouse's vote was a conflict of interest that should hold the same penalty regardless of whether money changed hands. This behavior is eerily reminiscent of the two boathouse fiascos that divided our community, despicable waste of negative human emotion. Decisions are based upon who wants what, no matter how insane.
Anyone else to address the commission? Seeing none, public comment period is closed. That brings us to the presentations, and item number three will be the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee by Chair Walt Lindela.
Good evening. Once again, commissioners, city managers, staff, I'm Walt Lindela. I am the chair of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for the City of Marquette, and here to give you our annual update on how things are going. We'll start with a little bit of an overview, that the purpose and mission is to advise the commission on its effort to support, facilitate, and grow an empowered and vital arts, cultural, and creative community in Marquette. We have a full committee. We have people that have stepped forward, give of their time to serve on these committees, and it does get things done the proper way. I thank all of the members of the committee for taking the time to volunteer of their efforts to make sure this works in the City of Marquette. And as I just mentioned, we currently do not have any vacancies. We are a full committee with a great mix of people from around the community, from all walks of life, but we are a forward-thinking group that has a lot of younger members that are concerned about the future of Marquette, and we understand that arts and culture is an important part of it. What we do is we serve in an arts advocacy and community engagement role, and also work with the city on planning and economic development for arts and cultural programming, grant administration, place-making, and special events, and public art. You may know, we just came through a very successful art week in the City of Marquette, and lots of people came to Marquette for that through the course of the week, and also do come to Marquette for the other events and activities that do go on in the city. It intertwines parks and recreation. I also had the opportunity to represent the committee on the ad hoc steering advisory committee for the master planning process for the Parks and Rec programs and department. And it was very well revealed in surveys with the public, residents in Marquette, that they look to arts and cultural events and activities in the city's parks. That ranges anything from the music and food festivals that we have, to even things along the lines as the maritime museum, all of that, that makes up the culture of Marquette. So, we are definitely involved in that. We are also involved in bridging generations by working with the senior center and senior programs. A major part of what is done with arts and culture in the Marquette also addresses the issues of giving seniors something to do in our city. They have creative outlets, they learn, some of them are taking painting classes or acting classes that, basically, they may never have done anything like that before in their lives, but arts and cultural programming allows that to happen and bridges, as I say, the generations in our city. We provide, develop, and coordinate community events, workshops, and exhibits. Some of those recent events include the Bach Festival, the Winter Roots Music Festival, the Marquette Spectacle, Holiday Art Sale, the Plain Air Painting Festival, Art Week, of course, as well as Creative Community Series and Senior Arts Programming. A lot of these are based on alliances and creative relationships between groups that are nonprofit agencies, such as groups like the Hiawatha Music Co-op, to the Marquette Blues Society, to some of the individual artists and creatives in our community that come together to do these programs. The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee works with Tina Harris and the rest of the staff in the Arts and Culture Office, and basically works to get these groups together to make these things happen in the City of Marquette. We've had exceptionally good success with that. As we take a look at some of the numbers here in the last little bit, some of the demographic and survey research that we've been able to point out shows that in the year 2018, about 17,000 people were served by these various programs, as you can see from the photos. You've got everything from concert series at the Prescott Park Band Shell to the community art programs, and that was in 2018, where it was 17,000. The numbers are increasing, they are trending upward. 21,000-plus people served in 2019 with these programs. Regional partnerships actually are a major part of it. Now, I did bring a couple of these little sort of visual aids here for you to consider, but this is the flyer, the multi-page program that went out for Art Week. A full-color flyer, this went out, and still is actually in demand at the office, because people want to see what there was and what was going on with it. This was supported by local businesses, by the department getting the opportunity to secure advertising for it. So, if you do see one of these, we also encourage you to support those businesses that have stepped up, that show the value, they believe in the value of arts and culture in our community. This is from U.P. Health System, Marquette. It is a booklet that outlines all of the art that is currently in the hospital, including several artists that are in the Marquette area. Center spread features Christopher Burnett, who is from Marquette, some of his photos that are on display at the hospital. Now, this Upper Peninsula Arts and Culture Alliance that you see outlined in this particular slide is basically a group of arts and culture advocacy agencies from various municipalities around Upper Michigan. They are following Marquette's lead. Marquette was the leader in getting this alliance going, and it works on projects, including the Power of Words Project. This photo is from a mural project that is in the Upper Peninsula. We are going to have one in Marquette. You're going to see it on Third Street very soon and start going up. It is just a great example of community art that is there for all to enjoy. The Upper Peninsula Arts and Culture Alliance was born in Marquette and is led by Marquette, and it is thanks to the efforts of Arts and Culture Programming and the committee in Marquette. Arts and Culture energizes Marquette. As you can see, this is the recently featured garage that had some art put on it to clean it up, make it better for Art Week, and it's been a hit. The Arts and Culture Office was able to help support that by working with the artist and with the property owner to do a project that cleans up, brightens up, and makes it more interesting in parts of Marquette. And that's just a small example of some of the things that the committee has done. As we move forward, we are looking at working on arts accessibility in Marquette, getting it accessible to all to be able to enjoy, or to take part in, or to create. Also, arts education is a big part of our efforts. The Cultural Trail is a project that has been in the works for a couple of years, and that really is an extension of the lakeshore, the bike path, some of the signage and things that are there, kind of working with groups to bring that all together to outline the history and culture of Marquette along the lakeshore, and as it grows into the city as well. The Band Shell, you'll be hearing more about that, is a project that was identified as one of the projects in the Parks and Rec master plan, as being a focus point that it needs an upgrade, it needs an update, and we will be working to advocate for that with the committee. Public art also will be a part of that, and I know we'll hear a bit more from the Public Art Commission that was created recently by the city. Economic impact surveys, we are in the process of doing that, to try to be able to show to the commission and the city staff the actual dollars that this does bring to Marquette. Signature events will be continuing, some with some modification, others will be shifting over into different focuses, but they will be happening. Marquette 365 is a calendar that is an event calendar coordinated through the Chamber of Commerce, the city, and several other stakeholders, where you can see what is going on in the city and in our surrounding area. And the Artist in Residence Program will be continuing as well. This is where folks come from outside of our area with the mission and purpose of spending time in Marquette to do a creative project, and then tell Marquette's story to the world is what they are doing with it. And that is basically it for the PowerPoint. I'd like to leave you with some of the thoughts of the committee, that as we look forward into the future, we know that there are financial challenges facing this city all of the time. We understand that. We are looking to the commission and to the city staff to keep in mind the value of arts and cultural programming, what it brings to Marquette for the residents, what it brings to Marquette for folks that are all age brackets and age groups, and also the people that it brings to Marquette to experience Marquette and tell their story. So, as you look at planning, and you look at budgeting, and you look at the line items in particular, as you're going through the process of putting that all together, remember that arts and culture is a vital part of Marquette. It's history, it's present day, and it's future, and we are looking for your continued support. We will advocate for that with you as a commission, as you're making those decisions, and we are always available if you have any questions. So, I'll open it up to questions right now, if you have any for me.
Commissioners, any questions? So easy? I'm sorry. Well, you gotta, you know, wave your hand, really. Commissioner Campana.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Walt, thank you very much for coming here tonight, updating us, letting you know what you're doing. We do have a very strong arts and culture group in the city, and we do appreciate that. Small question for you, you mentioned the Band Shell on the island. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that? Do you have some plans to, their dire need to be updated?
The actual plans, no. All I can tell you is that being involved in the steering committee and looking at the survey results that helped develop the master plan, getting that Band Shell back into a much better and much more usable facility, I mean, it's usable now, but do we need some power and technology upgrades there in some other parks that were identified? But the idea is, is to get that process rolling. I'm sure that Community Services could address that, or Parks and Rec could address that a lot better. All I know is that it came through as a very strong thing, that residents that were surveyed wanted. Actual plans, I'm sure we're a little ways away from that, but the idea was to make it more easier to get in and out of, in terms of loading things on, having a performance on it, supporting the roof, you know, it might be a complete redo. We don't know. That'll come with feasibility studies, but people want to keep it there, want to have it for concerts, and I know the creative community wants it redone as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, personally, I think it should be bulldozed and rebuilt, but, you know, I thought maybe you have some funding programs, funding plans right now, but apparently not, you know, probably private.
Well, it would be more in the level of working with Community Services and Parks and Rec to see what can be done. I know that we, as a committee, are in support of the efforts, yes. We've already talked about it that.
Well, I hope you can get something going on that, guys.
Yes, absolutely.
I think the community would like to see some improvements out there. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Walt, great presentation again. You just nailed so many great things that this committee takes care of, this advisory board. And unlike previous comments to this presentation, it just goes to show what community members can do to impact the Marquette area and the U.P. as a whole, to bring people here. It is a vital part of Marquette, like you said. The economic impact, I was really hoping you might have a number after last year's presentation.
And so do I, you know, we're in the process of putting that together.
Yeah, you'll get that, and I'm looking forward to being able to allow you guys to hang your hat on that, because it's well deserved. And just to touch on another piece, being at the grand opening at the hospital, it was so nice to see the U.P. artists featured in that building. Beautiful, beautiful works, and so, such a classy presentation that I saw. So, I just give you guys all kinds of accolades up and down, and I want to thank you all for your volunteering of the time. It's a lot of work, and you guys really knocked it out of the park, so, so thank you for all of that. At some point in time, I'm going to come to one of your meetings, and I'm going to talk about that Band Shell, because I've got a crazy idea, and I look forward to bouncing it off.
That's what we like.
Yeah.
That's what we like.
You guys can be a little crazy, I can only imagine. All right, thank you again. Great presentation.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, let me wrap up then with a few things, if I can. I really enjoy seeing, and I've been to a couple of events now, where arts and culture has gone in with the senior center and worked on projects together, and that is remarkable to see, and I think a great way of taking a different visualization of what art is and how it can integrate throughout the community. We often think of art as being kind of a freestanding thing over here. Reality is, it's everywhere, and if it isn't everywhere, we're not doing it right. I was privileged to be at the first meeting, I think, of the Upper Peninsula Cultural Alliance when they held at the amphitheater, Amphastan, rather, and it was quite remarkable, and highly commendable to bring those folks together, and you could feel the envy in the room as to what Marquette has and how Marquette does it versus where they are and what they would like to do. It was, it was just, again, a nice thing to do and a great step forward. I ask you to continue to work on the Cultural Trail. We need it, we need it badly. That's the missing piece that's out there, and if there's one critical thing I think the committee could do, that would be, in my view, number one, would be to get that Cultural Trail project moving, because I don't know how many people are standing out there looking at that big red thing on the harbor, and they have no idea what it is. And it's so bound into our history and our culture that it begs to be interpreted, so I would ask you to do that. And lastly, for the folks that are out there watching us, the community, or rather, the arts and culture has been very active in going out to different areas of the city and putting art up. For example, the Cinder Pond Marina Office is a nice collection. Likewise, right here at City Hall, when you come in to pay your taxes, smile, but you do get to go by a great gallery, and I, again, commend you folks for doing that. So, thank you very much for the presentation.
I thank you for the time this evening, and I just want to say in closing that you mentioned that the senior, the senior arts and that, with the staffing that has come onboard with the Arts and Culture Office, the position is split between the senior center and the Arts and Culture Office, which helps that happen very much. And I know we have a sympathetic commission here, we just ask you that you remember us when it comes time to put a few dollars on the line, because we can do a lot with less, but we'd like to do more with more. Thank you.
Our next presentation will be the Public Art Commission by Chair Christine Granger.
It's a white screen. There we go. Fairness. Good evening, commissioners, committee members. My name is Christine Granger, and I am the chair for the Public Art Commission. This is our very first presentation. We've been working very hard, and I'll explain a little bit about what we've been doing. I am not as dynamic as Walt, so, yay, I had to go after him. So, bear with me here. So, what have we been doing? What we've really wanted to focus on is making sure that we have a really good, strong base for the city to move forward in the future, so that we build great roots and a trunk system, so that we have everything in place to move forward. So, we've been going through and building guidelines, inventory, friends of... So we've been going through and building guidelines, inventory, friends of Marquette Arts and Public Arts, and we've also been doing some consulting. So I, okay, here we go. So by doing all of this work, we came up with a lot of questions that we wanted to answer and make sure that with that broad range of questions, we could put everything in place with the procedures and guidelines. So why we collect, what we collect, who we collect, where we collect, and how we collect this artwork. So we needed to make sure that we had clarity for the donors, the artists, the parameters for the steps for impact, and protection for the city. That was a really important goal that we wanted to make sure we had in place, was to protect our city, but also to have wonderful art in place. So we also thought that it was really important to think about the title for the collection. So it is impact, the Marquette Public Art Collection would have been the same as the Marquette Public Art Commission. So we are now calling the collection the Marquette Art in Public Places. So that's in place, going to go in here. So these are some of the critical considerations that we put in place. So I'm just going to give you a little bit from our guidelines, and just to let you know that our guidelines, we have completed them and put them to the city attorney, so we're still, we're waiting to hear back from them on that. So the goals for the public art is to make Marquette known as a haven for work significant artistic merit, integrate public art into all aspects of the community, and make art openly available to all citizens. Create distinct places, spaces, and objects that distinguish the character of the city. Educate the public about local history, culture, and values through public art. Increase the city's standing as both a tourism destination and a desirable place to live. Highlight the efforts of the local artists as well as featuring works of regionally, nationally, and internationally notable artists. So we also put in place a mission. So the larger mission is to engage in the selection, location, commissioning, and acquisition of public art within the city of Marquette. That enhances the character and identity of our community through the experience of public artwork, to reinforce the cultural, economic, and aesthetic value of creative work while recognizing the importance of artists and artwork in our communities. So a shorter version of that is the vision. The vision is sort of this key sentence that can be put out there, promoting art's ability to educate, inspire, preserve, and enhance cultural heritage and diversity. So then we also went through and wanted to make sure that we had a really solid way to go through acquisitions, so acquiring the artwork. So we have that completely put in place. Oh, I had one back once. And then we also went through the selection process. How are we going to go about selecting the particular work that we're going to accept for our city? And I'm not sure if I should go through all of those things with you because it's about 25 pages long. We have a really good, solid system in place, believe me. But these are things that we thought of great importance, so acquisitions, the selection process, the ownership and the maintenance. So we've seen things that have happened within the city in regards to maintenance of public art and how we go about protecting the city and protecting the artwork that we have in our collection. And so we are making sure that through that, we have created a beginning inventory of the work that is owned by the city as well as public art that is not owned by the city. So taking into consideration that work that the city owns, we'll be going in and documenting that work and seeing what might be necessary as far as maybe maintenance every other year, how to go about that when we get new work within the collection, speaking with the artist and making sure that we understand from this day moving forward how to take care of that artwork. Also, understanding the intellectual property and making sure that the artists as well as the city are protected. So there's lots of logistics that are based in here. We also put in place criteria for acquisitions, acceptance of methods and conditions, application information, and procedures for artists that are going to be applying to have their work part of the collection. So also putting in a standard for the selection criteria, and then a deaccession process. So we have had a situation in the past with the city where we did have a piece of public art, and it caused a lot of turmoil because we had nothing set in place in how to deal with that properly, a way to protect the city as well as a way to protect the artist. So we've got a deaccession process also in place, care and ownership of the collection, and again, the intellectual property for the artists themselves. So status, we are pending the final approval from the city attorney, like I said, stated earlier. We have built a comprehensive list of what is city-owned art and the other art that is in Marquette. There are 36 pieces that are half-city-owned and half-other, which are public art but not owned by the city. We're archiving and taking that inventory, and we're going to be working through for a baseline for maintenance. So we currently have an RFP that is also, I believe, with the city attorney, and we're waiting to see if we can get that sent out. And that is an RFP for going around the city and photographing all of the artwork that we have here. So we have an archive, and then eventually being able to possibly having it set up online where tourists can go, maybe setting up a QR code or a map system, making it kind of fun and interactive for our citizens or our community members as well as tourists. The fundraising arm of impact, so we have created a Friends of, and we were very lucky that Laura Riley donated her time and made us a 501(c)(3), so this is an umbrella for fiduciary funds for the city. So we have members Jen Ray, Dave Ryom, Nina Itner, Emily Lanto, and Tina Harris. So we do have this set in place so that we are able to accept funds for the Public Art Commission, as well as utilize those funds to maybe set out matching grants and things like that. So we're hoping to continually build up, build up the money. So right now, the group, the Friends of, are establishing their strategies and their protocols that are trying to put into place, just like we have been working over the last year to do. We've also participated in consultations here in the city, so in November 2018 for the Carp River Kiln Gateway Plaza. So we took in general considerations for the enhancement of the site, specific recommendations, and how public art could be integrated at that location. So this is another really important component of the Public Art Commission, is that we're here as a tool, maybe to guide people in the best ways to approach certain situations utilizing public art. Another one, in April 2019, the three dedicated bases for the future sculptures at the Spear Dock location, reworked the benches to act as locations for 2D low-relief sculptural works. So looking forward, we're going to complete the maintenance plan, identify first public art projects to be overseen by impact. That means like finding locations, putting out RFPs, so that's a request for proposal for artists to participate in, continuing with that map inventory online project, and also researching, looking for grants for our funding. So any questions for us?
Commissioner, Commissioner Hill, please.
This is so awesome.
Yay!
I was on the committee that helped form this committee.
Yes.
Final full disclosure, sitting in the basement of the library month after month.
After month.
So, yeah, so just, you guys are knocking it out of the park. This is all the stuff we talked about.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, really, all this, I know that was like, oh, logistics and all that stuff. This is what we needed to have happen in the city so badly, because there's this 18 pieces of art, 18 works of art, that it's like, the city folks, what do we, what do we do with all this? And it's, was given to the city and has so much meaning. It's so exciting to see you guys here.
Thank you so much.
So I had to jump in first. And the, and to bring that inventory online and to have it all be accessible to the public over, so that it's there for everyone to know, and that the Friends group is up and running, that's fantastic. So yay! And I hope that we can support the commission here, you know, whatever we can do at the city level, so that we can keep growing, and this, the vitality and the, and the health of our community is represented in the arts and to have a strong public art. And just, when we talk about public art, it's very specific, art in public spaces. I really like that framing, like, this is not about, like, this public, Arts and Culture Committee was about supporting the artist's community. This is about art in public spaces in Marquette, just, and we went around and around it. We looked at how other cities are doing it around the country, had some really good ideas, but you guys are just knocking it out of the park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Other commissioners? We are a quiet group tonight. Let me ask a question then. Did you, did you, did the committee wash the idea or have the approval of the city attorney for the formation of a 501(c)(3)?
Did what? I'm sorry.
The city attorney approved the 501(c)(3).
Yes, I believe so. It's all set in place.
That was part of the actual policy.
Yeah.
We tried to do this some years ago, and the word from the attorney was that it was not legal because you were a city entity.
Oh, that's why it's called the Friends of.
That's Friends of.
It's called the Friends of the public art.
Right.
So it is not directly related, it is not within that policy of public art. It is the Friends of.
But I mean, the city attorney approves that, then.
To my knowledge, we've not seen it, but Ron may have, I'm not positive. But my understanding is that this is not a nonprofit that is actually part of the city, is an entirely separate corporation.
Yes.
That acts as support, but it's not a city entity in any way, shape, or form.
Yes.
Well, thank you, just get a little nervous in making sure that we've got everything straight.
Sure, no, that's fine.
You know, we talk, we talk about public art, we've got public art in this room.
Yes, we do.
All of these illustrations and the photography is public art. And more importantly, that picture in the back is also public art. That is a Lundberg. Lundberg was a great artist of seascape, particularly for the Great Lakes, and that is a relatively valuable painting. So if, if you guys can take it under your wing for the work that should be done on it for restoration and maintenance, that would be a very good thing.
It is under our wing.
So it is all around us. Any other questions for the presenter? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
This brings us to the public hearings, and this would be item number five coming up, which is the proposed planned unit development at 1901 Division Street. Reminding everybody of two things, one, it will, it will be a roll call vote when we get to that point, and two, the SEMCO representatives are in the audience, so we do have them available for questions. Should any come up. Clerk, if you could please read the background.
Thank you, Mayor Background. On May 21, 2019, the Planning Commission conducted two public hearings for the establishment of a planned unit development, PUD, on an approximately two-acre portion of the property at 1901 Division Street, which will become a new natural gas operation stations for SEMCO Energy, Inc. The first public hearing was for PUD qualification. After the presentation of the file, staff review, and analysis, applicant testimony, and a public hearing, the Planning Commission made the following motion. It was moved by M. Larson, seconded by A. Andres, and carried six to one that after review of the concept PUD site plan dated 4/09/19 and received 4/23/19, and the staff file review analysis for O1 PUD O5/19, the Planning Commission finds that the request meets the following objectives, A, C, E, F, and G, and the criteria of selection 54.323F of the Market City Land Development Code. Therefore, the proposal is eligible for a PUD. The second public hearing was for the preliminary site plan for the PUD. After the presentation of the staff file review and analysis, applicant testimony, and a public hearing, the Planning Commission made the following motion. It was moved by M. Larson, seconded by B. Jackala, and carried six to one that after review of the PUD site plan dated 4/09/19 and received 4/23/19, and the staff file review analysis for O1 PUD O5/19. The Planning Commission, who previously established that the PUD met five out of the 10 required objectives and the criteria to be eligible for PUD of Section 54.323F of the Market City Land Development Code, and the preliminary PUD plan meets Section 54.323H of the Market City Land Development Code. Recommends that the PUD be approved by the Market City Commission with the following conditions: Approval of the PUD contingent upon SEMCO acquisition of the site, that the amended plan is submitted to meet staff comments for the final site plan review, which includes that portion of the driveway that is located in the right-of-way to be paved with HMA. Per the Land Development Code, Article 3, Section 323L, the City Commission must now hold a public hearing to review all findings and to determine that the proposed development will not be adversely affecting the public health, welfare, and safety. The City Commission scheduled this public hearing at the June 10, 2019 regular meeting. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve the proposed planned unit development at 1901 Division Street and direct the city attorney to prepare planned unit development contract, alternatives as determined by the commission.
I declare the public hearing open for the proposed planned unit development at 1901 Division Street. Is anyone here to speak to that issue? Ma'am, if you...
No, I, it's not that issue, but I did have a question, and how does the person go about getting an answer?
Ma'am, we do not take questions at this point.
Well, how does the person get a question?
Ma'am, I, this is only on the public hearing for this particular item. I cannot take questions that come out of any other issues.
Well, I understand that, but I've never been to a meeting before. How does a person come and be able to ask a question?
You will have an opportunity to ask a question at the public comment period.
Well, when is that, then?
That will occur in about, next item up, I think, no.
Couple items.
Couple items. We are presently on item five, and this will be item seven. Anyone else wishing to address the issue on the public hearing? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Do we have to make a motion?
Hmm?
Do we have to make a motion?
Well, we need a motion.
Okay. Um, I don't, if I'm, go ahead.
I do it. In fact, I'll do it.
We do a motion, but we don't do a vote.
Right, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but we have to move first, so go ahead.
Move it. Move it.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed planned unit development at 1901 Division Street and direct the city attorney to prepare a planned unit development contract.
Second. Second from Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds.
Second.
Further comments?
Keep the gospel on.
Okay, further comments?
None at this time.
And again, we will defer the vote and do a roll call vote at that point. So commissioners, any questions, comments?
Yep, thank you. So the, the state issued a statewide energy assessment on July 1st. The State of Michigan Department of Energy and the Michigan Public Service Commission in response to an accident that happened downstate with consumers' energy where gas, because of the very cold conditions and very unusual situation... um, because of the very cold conditions and very unusual situation, um, there was an emergency where gas stopped flowing, and they had to do a lot of work to address that, to make sure that people still had heat going to their homes. Out of that, um, and that report takes Mich, is a statewide energy assessment, takes a look at all of Michigan, and understanding that, how things work for energy, both electricity and gas, up here in the Upper Peninsula is completely different than how it happens for the most part downstate. I still want to, um, I'm asking that the folks in their final project development, um, look at the set of recommendations that are in that document, um, some of which may not be applicable, because it applies very much to a very specific situation downstate. But there are recommendations, particularly around, um, emergency management and integration between the natural gas provision and the electricity provision, because now that we are using natural gas as our primary source of fuel for generating electricity, that has become a bigger issue than it used to be. So, that's point number one. And then, point number two is, um, the, around that question of water management, um, and managing the water on-site, uh, which is required to make sure that the water that's being moved around as construction is happening, but then also in the, in the, in the maintenance of a pipeline where a lot of trees have been taken down, that used to provide shelter and cover for the rain that would fall. We now, there's gonna have to be more active water management, and how is that being addressed?
Gentlemen, is this a comment you'd like to address?
My name is Bill Hamilton. I'm the project manager for SEMCO's Marquette Connector Pipeline Project. I'll take the first, uh, question or, or comment, and I'll defer to our consultant, uh, representative from GEI Consultants, uh, to respond to the second regarding stormwater. Uh, regarding the first one, I do not know whether SEMCO leadership and staff have completed a, a review of the state energy assessment, but I can commit that, uh, SEMCO will provide a formal response, uh, relative to the recommendations, uh, contained in that, uh, assessment that are applicable to natural gas energy infrastructure. So, uh, I'll, uh, defer to your assessment that the recommendations were, was relatively concise. We can look at that, and we can provide a formal, uh, response to those recommendations as they apply to SEMCO.
Thank you.
So, relative to the stormwater handling, I'll defer to, uh, the GEI representative here from Marquette.
Thank you.
Kevin Roll, two-seven-five Foster Creek Drive. Uh, thanks, Commissioner Hill. This, for, regarding the stormwater, um, we did submit in the planned unit development package, our analysis on that site, specific to the 1901 Division Street site. We will retain all the stormwater, equivalent to what is happening in pre-construction conditions to post-construction. We will be modifying and removing trees on that site, but we have a retention pond, which will accommodate any stormwater runoff, um, to be less than pre-construction conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from any other commissioners?
Uh, one other, and then, is the, um, the, the lighting, um, since it, it, moving towards the idea that a dark sky is what we really want to have here in Marquette, is there any provision, um, on the facility to be, to have it be directed downward and, and not have too much light pollution on the site? Is that...
Again, I'm Bill Hamilton with, uh, SEMCO. Uh, all lighting was reviewed relative to the, the ordinances, uh, relative to not only, uh, direction, but, but brightness, and we meet all of those, uh, requirements. The intention would be that the majority of lighting would not be on unless there are activities going on there at night, that most of it would be, uh, uh, only switched, and only very select lighting would be on all the time. It would not be a, a fully lit facility at all times, only when folks showed up to do work during dark hours.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Schlegel.
It's probably a staff question for Dave. After I reviewed the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting, noting that there's a six-to-one vote, and, and understanding the PUD process, I'm wondering what the descending vote was, uh, as far as what, it did not qualify within the parameters of the process of a PUD.
Good evening, Mr. Schlegel, commissioners. Um, the minutes are pretty clear that there were concerns from one commissioner on a variety of topics. The descending vote was not just on one issue, it was on a series of issues related to this development. So, relative to your question, uh, as I said, there, pretty much the whole development was a non-starter for one of our commissioners, who's concerned with the safety, the location, um, the qualification criteria. Is there a, one specific issue in there?
What are the three criteria that you're supposed to abide by?
There were ten criteria, um, available to meet the standards for a PUD development. And, um, the PUD criteria qualification process requires that the applicant meet, I think it's five of the standards, five of the ten? So, they, they met those standards, in every case that those criteria were overwhelmingly supported by the board, even though there was one dissenting, dissenting vote on all of them.
I'll let it, I'll let it go at that.
Commissioners, satisfied with the vote? Roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. I make that seven-zero. Did I miss anybody? Excellent, that brings us down to the consent agenda. Uh, I would, uh, need a motion on that, but I must remind everybody that that does require a roll call vote, because we do have a resolution in it as item six-F. So, I have a motion from Commissioner, or Mayor Protem.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Uh, Mayor Protem, uh, Mayor Protem, anything further?
None.
Mr. Frazier?
No comment.
Any other commissioner comments? Okay, seeing none, please conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
And Mayor Stonehouse.
Yes. Um, item seven is the purchase request for city-owned property parcel zero-four-eight-zero-zero-one-zero, and that will also be a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, if you would please read the background.
Thank you, sir, background. Steve Pelto previously presented the city manager with an offer to purchase city property at twenty-three-thirty Prescott Avenue, parcel O-four-eight-zero-zero-one-zero. The lot is adjacent to his existing property, which houses the warehouse that was recently destroyed by fire. The additional twenty-five-foot-by-one-forty-foot vacant property will allow him to build, rebuild more comfortably. The property is situated on the northeast corner of Prescott Avenue and Holly Street, and is considered surplus. The City Commission adopted a resolution of intent to sell regarding this parcel at their meeting on April twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. Fiscal effect, the city will realize a one-time revenue of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, one-hundred percent of the appraised value, for the sale of the property and subsequent tax revenue. Recommendation, approve the sale of the property per, per the terms of the purchase and sale agreement, adopt the attached resolution of sale, and direct the city manager to complete the sale. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, motion for sale, and that's Commissioner Campana.
I would like to make the motion that we approve the sale of property per the terms of the purchase and sales agreement, adopt the attached resolution of sale, and direct the city manager to complete the sale.
Is there a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, further?
Uh, just that this is a very small piece of city-owned property that is of little to no value to the city. Uh, I like the idea of selling it to a private individual, we get some money for it, and the whole thing, it goes on the tax rolls, and it's, to me, it's, uh, one-hundred percent good for the city.
Commissioner Smith?
I echo Commissioner Campana's comments.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, comments? Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. That brings us down to public comments, the second public comment period. Uh, again, as a reminder, comments may not exceed three minutes, uh, please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Ma'am? Can we... Click that. Mike? Are we okay? Okay.
Hi, I'm Kathy Goodrow, and I've lived in Marquette all my life, and this is regarding...
Ma'am, I need, I need an address.
Yes, no barrier.
No, thank you.
Yeah. Apartment six-twelve.
Thank you.
I now use the bus, and I'm wondering why South Division Street, as long as I've lived in Marquette, has never really been kept up? And it's in very, very bad, bad. It's terrible, absolutely terrible. And riding the bus, it's hard for us older people, too, to be going over those potholes and bumps, it's hard on our bones and stuff, and I'm wondering why that has never been kept up? I mean, where is all the tax money going, and how does it get put on a schedule to get done? I, I mean, what type of...
No, we cannot answer you directly, but we will have public, or commissioner comment following...
Okay.
Your, we'll, we'll talk about it then.
Oh, okay, already. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else to address the commission? Anyone else to address the commission?
Yeah, I'll flesh this out a little bit more. Again, Art Sari, one-zero-zero-two, Alaway Road. First off, I, I do think, I do wish to really thank all the people that serve on the various commissions, uh, to help the city, your commission, the groups that presented here tonight. They do a very fine job. Uh, once again, I'm going to go back to the issue of the boardwalk. I'm not sure this is the best allocation of city funds. I'm not sure it helps the individuals that have been citizens of Marquette, as well as it helps individuals that are renters or purchasers of the new high-rises down there, of which there's been some controversy, as well as the Hampton Inn. That area will be very accessible to them, but I'm not sure how accessible it's going to be to other members of the population of Marquette. When it comes, gets the allocation of city funds, I, it, it's sort of interesting that one of the worst streets in Marquette is East Nicolay. Now, I don't live on East Nicolay, but I will point out that two prior city commissioners live on East Nicolay, so I believe maybe this is something you have to look forward to. It's basically one pothole after another. It could probably take out anything that's a low-slung car. You basically need probably a four-wheel drive to get through there at some point. So, perhaps that will await you in the future. The, the reason that, uh, this boardwalk is of some concern is because we have, we have concerns about rebuilding things at the island, whether it's the ban shell or whatever. The island works for everybody, and the reason it works for everybody is that as you drive out to the island, though it's not an ideal view now, and you do wish to build a ten-million-dollar mile there eventually, um, you at least see the lake, and then when you go around the ordock, you at least see to the southeast of the road. And when you get to the break wall, you can at least participate, even if you're in a vehicle, with, um, the wave action and whatever else, and if ever, if ever you go out there when there's a nor'easter, it's really quite impressive how many people are out there. Now, you go around the top of the island, and you really can't see very much other than trees or deer. And then, when you go down to Sunset Point, you again are, are presented with a beautiful view that's accessible for somebody that's in a vehicle. That continues until you get to the pavilion, and then obviously you have to pay attention to where you're driving as you head out of, out of town, out of the island area, but you do get to see the lake to the left. So, the, the concern I have is that this boardwalk you have down there, that's a very expensive project, doesn't necessarily benefit people who have limited accessibility. And I recommend that any of you that are questioning that accessibility, you park up by the county courthouse and you walk down there, and then walk back up, because basically that is what you are going to be subjecting people to. Unless you put in additional parking down there, there's no accessibility.
Sorry, your time has expired.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the commission?
Margaret Brum, four-oh-four East Magnetic Street. I have three thank-yous in no particular order. The first thank you is to Marquette City Police Lieutenant Ryan Grimm for his attendance at a presentation on bicycles, bicycles, bicycles. He went to the Marquette City Public Library and interacted with participants in the program for over three hours. He brought along the latest in Marquette police bicycle equipment, and, uh, to be honest, he was the hit of the show. He had, uh, not only the equipment, but, uh, explanations. We talked about bicycle safety and making people visible, and he explained that his bicycle uniform was designed to have a different reflective pattern depending on where the light hit him. And so, this type of, of opportunity for a Marquette City Police Officer to interact proactively, positively with the public was just fantastic, and my thanks to the Police Department, and he was, as I said, he was the hit of the show. Uh, the second thank you goes to the city manager, Fire Chief Ian Davis, and Community Services Manager John Swenson for their participation in the donation of the first beach wheelchair to the city of Marquette. Uh, this was a project dear to my heart, after we presented one to a friend in a church group. I made it a goal this year to get one and donate it to the city, but in order to do that, I needed the city to commit to deploying the beach wheelchair. And it's not as simple as taking it down and leaving it at a lifeguard station. Uh, different people had to be involved, lifeguards had to be trained and buy into the process. Fire chief had to be consulted for, uh, ease of access to the beach, and, and the Community Services Manager was responsible for putting the whole batch together. And as of the beach opening on July fourth, twenty nineteen, the city of Marquette has a beach-accessible wheelchair at Clark Lambros Park. And this is an example of how progressive we are as a community, making our, our jewel more accessible to all sorts of people. And my third thank you is to the public safety officers and people of the city of Marquette for a fantastic Fourth of July weekend. Uh, it was my best Fourth of July weekend ever, part of it was the beach wheelchair, but also part of it was just getting out and about. Traffic was moving, uh, people were having a good time without being obnoxious. The, um, the garbage was being picked up, so there was no garbage on the beach as you walked. I went around the island probably half a dozen times over the four days. Only once did I see people parked where they shouldn't be. I called the number, and the voice at the other end of the line assured me that they'd been notified and people were on the way. So, I got the sense that it was a, a very tremendous holiday, and my, my compliments to everybody involved in making it a tremendous holiday. Again, thank you very much to all people named.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the commission?
The manager, and just, could you please not talk during the comment? It's really, you know, annoying. Frank Jeff Verdo, these are my opinions. June twenty-fourth, Mr. Campana neglected to respond to two allegations, the first being how out of line he was for trying to circumvent the public process to force a pole sign ordinance through. He literally acted as if that was the most important item this board has faced during his five years of disservice to our city. No sense of judgment or priority whatsoever. His second failure was not addressing the details of why this so-called mayor was accused of lying, despite hearing the details at least twice. I also challenge him to determine which of us disliked hearing this mayor accused of lying more. He answered with silence, you know, sheer cowardice, beaten as has been the case every time, an alleged case of malfeasance has arisen. He used me to brown-nose up to Mr. Stonehouse without addressing the specifics of why I had a... had accused him of four separate lies in agonizing detail. Abetting these alleged lies makes Mr. Campana equally as culpable. This is what Mr. Campana needed to respond to from June 24th and 10th, quote. Mr. Campana said he doesn't like the mayor accused of lying, that being Mr. Stonehouse's alleged broken promise that there'd be plenty of time for public input on parcel two. I don't like this mayor accused of lying a whole lot more than Mr. Campana doesn't. Mr. Campana tried to divert public, the, the public by not addressing the specifics. No one has bothered to explain why in all the time between October 9th and April 29th, the renderings we saw briefly on October 9th couldn't have been copied for inclusion in the April 29th packet. Seven months this board had. Requests from several residents to provide them were ignored. So long as Mr. Stonehouse assured us of this opportunity, it was up to him to make sure this was fulfilled, end quotes. Let's now review his alleged lie of November 29, 2010, as quoted from December 13th. After the meeting, he made a concerted effort to walk across this room, all angry with his lips awavering, to tell me he'd been writing notes from my comment. He acted embarrassed that I'd made an issue of his nonstop writing roughly one minute into my comment, after which he continued undaunted for minutes more. On the verge of losing his cool, he showed me a box and one-sixth of a sheet of paper with my name and a total of six to eight words inside, they're the type of notes I've asked members to take. The trouble is, he wrote for three minutes, many times the writing, on matter that wasn't in any box under my name, end quote. He hasn't improved to this day. He ignores the truth, knowing that at this late stage, the truth will not set him free, but would only bury him alive. Mr. Frazier wins the award for the lamest responses of all. He keeps saying I should run for commission, and I cut down every mayor, every member. He does so without addressing my previous replies to those concerns. He keeps repeating and repeating and repeating. Now, then by accident, I learned his nickname is Repeat. I mean, you can't make this stuff up, it's so weird.
Anyone else to address the commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us to commission comment. Mayor Pro Tem, would you begin?
Sure. Well, I don't have much, many comments this evening, and I think most of my questions are for the City Manager, so sorry in advance. So I sent an email over the weekend when I was downstate, and I wanted to know what we have for as far as, the state has now set emergency marijuana rules in place, and I'm wondering when we are expected to hear something back from the City Attorney on that. The next I have is to Mrs. Goodrow's question on South Division Street, which I think you, that's why you went back there to find out when Division is going to be up on the, the schedule, because I don't have that in front of me either. And just if you could, to Mr. Sari's questions, probably easier for us to have you explain, I mean, as far as the brownfields and how that works and how it's not, like, that, so.
Sure. Well, Ron is out of town, and I'm certain he will address that emergency rules by the, by the mari, by the marijuana governing people. I know that it was one of his priorities, and he was fully expecting the rule to be, or the rules to be out in June, so he was ready to move ahead. So I'm cer, I'm certain as soon as he comes back, he'll be moving forward with that. Regarding the Division Street, I'm, I'm sorry to say it's not on the capital improvement plan until 2020, 2022. I'm sorry. So.
I mean, why has it never been kept up? I, I guess, I, I don't understand how a road can go so long, so bad, and not be fixed.
Well, I can use other examples. Altamont Street, for example, just south of the bridge, has been in terrible shape for many, many years, and just finally was completed this year. All of it is based on capital improvement planning, the money we have to spend. There is a rating system that the city staff uses to address the timing of the projects. And something that got thrown in this year, which often happens, is that the commission was faced with coming up with $3 million as a match for a grant related to Lake Shore Boulevard, which in essence cuts projects off of the year and moves them further down the road.
I've seen, I've seen roads, though, that really didn't need to be repaved and were repaved.
Well, it also has to do with infrastructure. There's an infrastructure schedule we're following, and by infrastructure, I mean water and sewer, and storm sewer. So quite honestly, if the water and the sewer and the storm sewer are functioning, we do our best to maintain the, the road as usable until such time as we can afford to repair everything. It makes no sense to us just to repave the road when we don't, when we in fact have to come back in a year or two and do the, the sewer and the water. So the commission has embarked on a plan of funding infrastructure projects through rate increases and things of that nature. So we are, we are moving in that direction, but the, the bottom line is that, you know, we have limited dollars to spend. They get rated a certain way. Some projects take priority over others, and I apologize, I agree with you on Division. I mean, it's not in good shape. I'm, I'm down there a lot. And, you know, if there was something we could do to make it better, I mean, we do patch it, we do all that kind of stuff, but it's on our list. It's not unfortunately soon, but it, it will be taken care of, and it can, if it can be moved up, you know, we'll try to do that, too. Okay. And then regarding the Founder's Landing, I, I don't think any, everybody understands how the brownfield works, but just to note that in the most recent, I think, hearing that we had regarding or discussion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but I was in a meeting with Barry Posen, and I believe he told us that there was public parking in, in two Marquette Place, which is the next phase of construction to begin down there. So we have the public parking available at the parking lot in Brega. There's a parking lot on Lake Shore Boulevard that's all public, and then there will be additional spaces within that new development. So we should have or hope to have enough public parking available. Okay?
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say how happy I am with how I think this weekend went. There was a lot going on. The town was absolutely abuzz, and I think that the city staff, the fire department, the police department, and everybody just did a fabulous job of keeping things moving, keeping people safe. We had some incidences, I'm sure other people will talk about, that are, were, were well at, well-attended to, and just very, I just want to give a, a real big shout-out to everybody that made this, this weekend a success, including the group. I know that there were others, but one that I saw online on social media was the Michigan State Alumni Group that went down to Picnic Rocks, or, or excuse me, McCarty's Cove, anticipating a massive cleanup effort. It was great to see that there, it wasn't necessary, and I think that, you know, that's because of what? The proactive approach that the, the firemen, or the, the police department took with the, with the group that was down there at, at McCarty's. And, you know, it's all about empowerment, and when we police ourselves, when we police our neighbors and, and help educate, it's, it's all going to make things run that much more smoothly. And, and, you know, we all have to be accountable for, for our, our own personal space and our, and helping out our neighbors if they need to be helped out. So I just really, it was a proud moment as a, as a City of Marquette resident, and I just want to make sure that that's been well-beaten down. So there we go. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
You know, I think the things I was going to say have already been said, so I have no additional comments this evening.
Commissioner Hill?
All right. Look forward to discussions on marijuana. Hopefully we can get that done and out of the way. I was also on Division this weekend, and it's, it's really in very bad shape. So I'm wondering if the rating will allow it to move forward, but we'll see. It's, it's terrible. It's really terrible. In some ways, I think it's even worse than Altamont was, and that's a road I use all the time, too. I thought I heard that there was actually public parking at one Marquette Place, is my understanding, so not, but it's actually there now. But it, yeah, I think it sounds like we really need to clarify that and maybe do something to make sure the public understands that. And then announcements, I was contacted yesterday, the, or Friday, the State Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy Office is starting a recycling campaign, and they're going to have an event in Marquette on July 31st, so stay tuned for more about that. It's particularly around understanding what the rules are around clean recycling. Michigan has some of the worst recycling rates in the Midwest, and part of the reason is we're putting things out that can't be recycled because they're not in a condition to be reused. So that's what that's about. And coming up on July 23rd is a planning commission session where they're going to address the changes in the land development code. It was an enormous undercaking to redo the entire code, and this is going to be a meeting to start doing the tweaks as we found things that need to be adjusted. And then final announcement is July 17th, the League of Women Voters City Commission Candidate Forum will be right here in this room, but also available online, livestreamed and available online after for the folks who are running for the primary on August 6th. Hope you can take part in that. And again, also, I want to echo, a great job with the city crews making this weekend a, a great event, dealing with the things that came before us, the accidents, but then also just keeping everyone safe. Really great job to everybody. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Frazier?
Great weekend, lots of events, everything, good times. Fire Department, or the Fire Department were good. They had a late night, the one night with the accidents, and all their EMS had to late night with all that stuff, police, fire, ambulance, everything went by. Unfortunately, accident, maybe else was safe. The fire chief had a hard call with the weather, kept on looking at the storm, might come, might not, and he just decided, I'm going to call it, wait for tomorrow, see what I find the next day, so it was great. Everybody got a chance to just get out of the weather, which is great. And as far as coming to black, there's the old saying called, black sheep, black. There's a certain person that loves to comment during our meetings that has never really, just loves to tell everybody what a bad job they're doing. And if this person would ever like to try it, like I said, they could run for commission and see if they could do it. The mayor job is not an easy job. It's a hard job to do. He's been a very involved citizen in the community. He's done a lot of work. He does hard work, and mayor's not an easy job. He does commission work. It's a lot of work. If the person would ever, you know, stop, just comment about how bad we do, or how bad somebody's family is, or whatever, and talk about something we did like 20 years ago, or 10 years ago, whatever, instead of focus on what we do now, the city's focused on what we're doing now. As far as the piling project down in Lower Harbor, that's going to be an interesting project. It's something we had to do because, as I was understanding by the, our city manager said, the DNR gave us so much time before we had to, because the piling's been sitting there for a long time, since the old days, we do something with them by this time. If we didn't do anything with them, we had to pay, go to the City Public Fund, take them out. So we had no choice, either develop it through brownfield money, which we do brownfield money, or take them out. So we decided to use brownfield money to apply them, and they will be accessible. There'll be handicap parking down there, be, and, I mean, many citizens love to walk, see people walking all the time. I've walked, I've been challenged for, if you ever walked for, I walked from the food fest up to town, had dinner, and walked back. I've been challenged that before. I did it. Other people, other people can't do that. They have challenges, but there's, that's what handicap parking's for. I agree with that. I've been challenged before. I've had, spent time in wheelchairs, been walked, I've been, had lots of injuries. I've done it, but hey, everybody has their own time to do things, and everybody gets by. That's why they have, you know, areas, and the area will be good. Be great for everybody to enjoy the lake, go out and see things, and there will be parking available, like the city manager just had, the same, the new building, you have parking, there'll be parking available. If not, there's lots all over the place. People go all over the place, and, you know, the guy said, you know, island is beautiful. Yes, a lot, love to go to the island, but I love the island, too, but you have to be careful going to the island during high seas. I've learned this many years. The lake is beautiful, but respect it. That's all you say, is respect the lake, because I've been out at the lake for rough seas. That's unfortunate about what happened last time. Somebody didn't respect the lake, they throw wave jumping, and look what happened, so. What I say is say, respect the lake, how beautiful it is, how great it is, just respect it at times when it's angry, so. And that, and we all, Commissioner Campana was talking, you know, somebody concerned, had concerns with them. We get that a lot. We get people emailing us, talking to us all the time about their concerns and things. I'm a boater. I get boaters talking to me all the time, you know, but the, we can't make a decision right away. Dick Campana didn't know, he just asked, can we do something about this to help somebody out? A local business owner, that's all. He's a local business owner, too. He had a business for many years. He's done work in the community, he's been a great person to talk to, very involved. So I think that's what he's got to worry about, is certain people love to comment, you know, during meetings and have questions. Certain people love to comment about everything the commission's done, mayors have done, past and present, and just loves to tell everybody what to do. And the only person, this person only comes during city meetings when he can be on TV. He never comes to budget meetings, work sessions, any other time. He only comes to TV meetings, he can be on TV and be on the record. And that, we're good.
Commissioner Campana?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not much, just want to thank the residents and visitors for this, having a safe and memorable weekend this past weekend, and especially for not littering and trashing the public properties, beaches, as has happened in the past. This was a good weekend. Everybody respected the areas, so hope to see that to be a continued trend. Thank you.
Thank you. A few things to clean up, I think. Number one, to thank everybody for the great work they did the 4th of July, both the city crews and the service clubs, too, that really stood up. I mean, when we looked at the food fest and how quickly that, how professionally and wonderfully it was run, and just as important, how quickly it was cleaned up, and the tents folded up, and the park again returned to full public use. That was remarkable. Great parade put on by Kiwanis, absolutely, and the Chamber of Commerce stepping up with the fireworks this year. That was the principal funding agency for them. They, they just did a remarkable job. We've got a few things to work on, I think, with Prescott Isle, and coincidentally, tomorrow night, we have a meeting with the Prescott Isle Advisory Committee, and that'll be in this room at 5:15, I think. Is it this room, or?
Downstairs.
103. It'll be the, in the basement at room 103 at 5:15, if anyone wants to attend. And there's a host of other issues with Prescott Isle that, that the committee, the commission, rather, needs to, to meet with the committee on. Piling project, I think, has been identified, but we have to realize that money doesn't, is not necessarily, how do I say, that money can be obligated for one particular purpose only. For example, the money that's going to do the piling project is coming from the brownfield. It cannot be used for roads. It cannot be used for general fund projects. It has to be used only within the confines of a brownfield, and hence, that money is being used as a, as a public good to, to work with the pilings that are there, as Commissioner Frazier had stated. Issue with parking? It is an issue, certainly. You can argue that we have issues with parking all over Marquette. So here becomes the question, how many buildings you want to bulldoze down to build a parking lot? How much asphalt do you want to spread across the city just to have another parking lot? Or we want to try and retain the structures that we have and work around them with other parking solutions? And I think it's, it's certainly obvious to most people that they don't want to have the City of Marquette be one big Kmart parking lot. And that ultimately is what we could be doing if our only consideration is where do people park. Looking forward, as I think many commissioners, to getting marijuana off the table and done and finished and move on to another project. So we, we need to keep our, our focus on that, too. Other than that, thank you to everybody for making the 4th of July such a great time and such a good, safe holiday. And City Manager, the opportunity is now yours.
Thank you. And again, thank you, commissioners, for supporting our efforts here. And just to follow up on a comment about parking in, in Prescott, in Prescott Park specifically, I know there was some social media over the weekend that criticized the parking in that area. And the police department has, had issued 66 tickets over the holiday, just there. And then you compound that with where people were parking everywhere else in town. It was, it was a concentrated effort. It was, it was a concentrated effort, so I, I thank them for doing that. And they will stay diligent, they will stay consistent, and in my opinion, with a strong effort, the, the, the parking situation will subside there. I don't know that we have to create any more rules or do any more changes, as long as people understand and, and learn that they will be cited, I think it'll, it'll take care of itself. And lastly, my community office hours for July are this Wednesday at ten AM in the Market Public Library, and that's all I have. Thank you.